That's picture sure, right?
Yeah.
That, that, I want to go back to that.
I know, aren't they?
Crowd scene, that was the.
I know, and then, yeah, I mean, the whole, the whole little display thing, that's just amazing.
Part. I mean, these look fake.
Yeah.
People, people are doing make.
It, it looks like a sales brochure, you know?
Yeah, it does.
Slip.
Righty, thank you very much, your workshop is in order, Mr. Manager, you want to? Please?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight for our third workshop on at the FY23 budget in advance of tonight's public hearing and first reading of the budget ordinance. In the interest of time this evening, I'm not going to go through all these slides, I'm only going to highlight areas where there've been changes since the last public work session. So, as always, the goals of the workshop, we're updating and finalizing our planning assumptions and presenting any changes we've made since the last work session, which was two weeks ago. This is the highlights of the substantial changes made since the last workshop. So, the first list of items is about $2.2 million of additional CIP in the general fund, not general fund.
I don't know, I think it should be general fund.
It's anonymous. They, they are. And so, these are for a list of council identified priority projects. As we've narrowed down the final numbers, these are areas where we're recommending additional investments beyond what we've initially proposed. So, for the Academy Downtown Bypass Project, $250,000 for engineering and identification of the priority intersections to make that project move forward. We will be seeking partner funds from C funds, SCDOT, and with any of these, we are, we are continuously looking in the bipartisan infrastructure law for applicability to any of these projects. On Augusta Street, $650,000, this is for the next step as identified, identified in the plan for engineering and design of the utility undergrounding. So, this will get us to a, a place where we can issue construction documents. For the Greenland Spartanburg area, as a result of the conversation at the City Council Retreat, this is money to study the public infrastructure needs, planning for ingress egress of the neighborhood, and begin the conversation of a viola-like TIF in the Greenland Spartanburg neighborhood. For Stone Avenue improvements, $250,000, this is for planning and design, this is going to follow a similar pathway to the Augusta Street improvements, where you have an initial, initial scope of planning related to pedestrian safety improvements, traffic improvements, and then we would see in the following years, money for engineering and construction. And then $500,000 for Wade Hampton Boulevard, so there is an existing Wade Hampton Boulevard master plan. This was money to take the identified scope of projects and engineer them to a place where we can then move forward on construction. So, that's the bulk of the change in the general fund. In the hospitality tax fund, we've recommended an addition of 1.5 million for Lawrence Road Swamp Rabbit Trail connections. This is to bring connectors out from the trail across Lawrence Road into the neighborhoods, Nickel Town, Parkins Mill, Gower. Those, those neighborhoods would be the priority for the first year, and this funding is recommended to continue beyond year one. The next two items are related to a different ordinance that's on your agenda this evening, related to the Unity Park Honor Tower. Also in the general fund, we are recommending the addition of one additional FTE for municipal court, additional court service associate. As they go into the construction phase of their new facility out on Halton Road, they've identified a need for significant records management to identify what records they don't need to hang on to and move and things like that going forward. An additional $100,000 in the general fund for homelessness services. This is an increase over the current funding that's already built into the operating budget. This would allow our partners at United Housing Connections to supply two full-time employees Monday through Wednesday from 10:00 to 6:00, four full-time employees Thursday and Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and two full-time employees on the weekends from 12:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to provide outreach and support services to the homeless population. So, this is an effort we started last year in working with our partners. This is money that the city would fund as a portion of their overall budget to expand those services.
And, and that will be allocated to United Housing Connections, correct?
That is the intent, yes, sir.
Perfect. Yeah, and the total.
That's great.
We, we, we were funding a position last time?
Yes, sir, so we had $50,000 in the current year's budget, this will bring it up to 150 to fund three of the four full-time positions.
That's fabulous.
It's, um, sorry, Matt, on that one, and this may be a Lorraine Crowell question, I apologize, but, I mean, if you're not comfortable, just say. But, you know, basically, what we're doing there is funding a staff position under, under United Housing Connections oversight to help those that are willing to accept help of the homeless population. This is not a panacea, and I don't want the community to think that this is something that can completely solve the problem. This can allow us to respond to those who need assistance and who want assistance for a 24/7 period of time, was that, or?
So, it, it is not 24/7 coverage, but this does, would, would provide coverage through most of the day during the week and enhanced coverage on the weekends.
Okay.
Currently, they're not able to staff on the weekends.
Got you.
They're not funded for that level. And I'm sure our partners can come in and give you a greater explanation of the services, but that's, that's the understanding at this point.
Great, and I, yeah, I would appreciate that, to, to say specifically. Right, and what we cannot do, what we can and cannot do is what I'm looking for.
Lorraine also sent a note to all council members, and I hope everybody saw this, that if you get it, sometimes people write us individually, it's group, it's always complicated, who's responding, what do you do? So, Lorraine's deal is, anyone on council, if you get an email, a text, a letter, telephone call, send, send it to her, and she's offering to respond. In fact, what she does, as you may have known, she responds and says, by the way, I'll have a cup of coffee with you and meet one-on-one, because they need to hear the whole story of what we're doing. And it has been extremely effective as it, as it zeroes in on individuals who, as Dorothy said, won't, won't help, and, and gets them the help, and in many cases gets them off the street, which is their goal. Because it is, Lorraine likes to say, it's not safe on the street, we now know that, the jury's in on that, and she's very effective. It's been a great thing to be able to refer her, know who to call when we see something.
I would also add to the city manager, it would be, I think it would be helpful, in my opinion, and certainly staff can weigh in on that, but if Lorraine could communicate to the downtown merchants association their role, what they do and, and what's being provided there, because I think those merchants need to understand the.
She's, she's met with many of them, yeah.
But, I mean, in the merchant, you know, as a body, it would be good.
Hands-on.
Yep. Yep. Good.
So, the final item of change from the previous workshops is an increase of $700,000 in various tourism funds for floorfield capital maintenance. This would be associated with an amended lease with the Greenville Drive that we would continue to invest in public improvements around floorfield stadium as, as they make improvements on their private investments to meet major league baseball standards. So, this is something that council has been briefed on, and so, bringing forward for discussion.
And, and Matt, this is not written as a recurring expense, is it, at this point?
It is written as a current, a recurring expense at this point, but it's only subject to annual appropriations. So, the only action you're taking now is agreeing to, year one until the lease amendment.
So, I got a little confused on the language, because to be clear, I'm, I'm in full favor of, of helping the Greenville Drive as we can and need to, but it says tourism funds for floorfield capital maintenance. So, those are two different things, capital and maintenance, what does that mean?
Capital maintenance is the defined term in the existing lease, so we're currently providing $150,000 for maintenance of specific items in which the, the city has been a capital funding partner, and so, we're just using that already defined term in the agreement.
Okay, good, thanks.
Matt, before you move on, even though you gave commentary on Augusta Road, let me just check in with Clint Link if I can. Clint, is this $650,000 for Augusta Street, is it what we've, you and I have recently referred to as Phase Two?
Yes, it includes basically the section of Augusta Street from Church Street to Malden Road or Crystal Avenue, and we get the engineering design and utility undergrounding design.
And, and, and the possibility, should we see, deem it appropriate to engage a consulting firm to help us in the efforts, is that all baked in this?
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Let me, maybe I was a little confused, I thought we were also providing funding for that section of Augusta where we relocated poles a couple of years ago to finish that up in front of the Chase Bank.
Yes.
Is that in there too?
We're, we're, we're looking at the utility undergrounding for that whole section.
That's a, that's a relocation, not a, not an underground.
Right.
Just want to make sure we're, Assistant Manager Shannon, make sure that's still in there. That was a, that loan was around, I thought it was around $800,000.
Matt, got a question about the municipal court. When you say we're adding one additional full-time employee, what are we budgeting for that?
So, I think the full-time, the fully loaded costs of salary and benefits is around $58,000.
Okay, and my understanding is they were asking for two? And why are we looking at one as opposed to two?
So, we've, we've loaded in what we think we can absorb in terms of personnel. Across the budget, there were numerous positions that were requested but not funded. And so, with the request for two, we, we have capacity for one, if council wishes to revisit that, that's, you know, beyond our recommendation. There were 73 personnel requests, we funded about 21 of them.
And the only reason I ask is I know that they've run a backlog from COVID, and my understanding was that these positions are supposed to help with that. If we get to a point where, you can chime in on this too, if we get to a point where we're not able to bite into that back, that backlog in sufficient manner, what can we do to, to try to alleviate that?
So, the city manager has authority within the allocated number of positions and allocated budget to increase staffing. So, we would do as we have done in previous years with, with other emerging situations where personnel's, personnel is needed. We can take a vacancy from another department and provide it to municipal court, along with the funding to staff up if needed.
Okay. Just, if y'all can, keep an eye on that, and if we need that.
That's standing.
Matt, a couple more things on this slide. The additional general fund CIP investments, so those were part of our ranking of, council was asked to rank a list of capital projects, and it's good to see these come to fruition. The last one listed in that group, $500,000 for the Wade Hampton Boulevard improvements. Very grateful that that Wade Hampton is being noticed and being given some attention, that $500,000 is preliminary engineering. I recognize tonight, we are not voting on a five-year planned expenditure, and that what's needed on Wade Hampton needs study first to put a number on it, but make no mistake, that Wade Hampton master plan needs to be, continued to be at the forefront of what we consider in future budget years. They've been waiting a really long time. It's a great opportunity to, to improve that space, and I hope council will be supportive of future spending on that corridor as they are being on, on certain corridors in tonight's project. There is some low-hanging fruit in the Wade Hampton master plan that we have been identifying for the last several months that will need funding, and I'd like that to be considered. Oh, another question on this slide, so just, that's a statement. The next bullet point, 1.5 million added to the hospitality tax fund CIP for Lawrence Road Swamp Rabbit Trail connections. So, those are trail connections to neighborhoods?
Yes, to allow the neighborhoods to connect to the, the trail.
Okay, how is that tourism-related? I thought we weren't allowed to use hospitality funds to connect to neighborhoods.
So, they are connecting to the, the Swamp Rabbit Trail, which is a tourism-related expenditure.
Okay, so we could connect, you know, we could add additional connections to Nickel Town from the Swamp Rabbit Trail using tourism funds. Because I asked this question before, and I was told no.
No, I, I can attest that we've done it many, many times before.
I'm just, I asked before, and I was told no, that's all I'm asking, is the answer now?
We did one at the Y, we did one at the YMCA on Cleveland Street, we did one at Nickel Town.
So, we can, we can add connections to neighborhoods to the Swamp Rabbit Trail to just serve that neighborhood?
Yes, but that is a different question than just building trails out of hospitality tax that don't connect to a tourism-related facility. When the specific question is connecting neighborhoods to a tourism-related facility, then yes, that's.
So, we can add, we can use tourism funds to connect neighborhoods to the Swamp Rabbit Trail.
And we're recommending that you do so.
Okay, great, thanks.
Talking on this one so long, my mouth went to sleep. All right, Megan, help me out. Okay. All right, so the total, the total budget being considered by council this evening is 237.5 million. This is a list of every fund in which you are appropriating funding. So, in this work session and previous work sessions, we have focused on a select few funds where there are personnel or capital expenditures. We'll continue to do that tonight, but there are a number of funds in which you will appropriate funding that we haven't discussed in detail. And I'll go through towards the end of the presentation what those are and the various reasons why we haven't discussed them in detail. But in general, the, the budget overall relies on the use of about $15 million in fund balance. And so, this is, these are resources corralled in prior years that are available for spending, and this is almost exclusively related to capital improvements. And so, of our capital improvement program, which is 20, 30 million, something like that, we're funding about 15 million from fund balance, so we're using a portion of saved resources and current resources for that funding. The, the total budget is just over half encompassed in the general fund. The second largest source is enterprise funds, these are business-type activities, wastewater, sewer, parking. Internal service funds are where we reflect the revenues and expenses for health insurance, risk management, fleet services, and things of that nature. Tourism funds are a category of special revenue funds in which we reflect the tourism-related funds, hospitality, accommodations, Sunday alcohol, and admission sex. And then other special revenue funds include things like event management, solid waste, and things like our community development funds, which we will discuss this evening. One final note on the citywide budget. The proposed total budget for debt service for the city, if you look at the bottom box, is increasing from 13.2 million in the current year to about 15.5 million in FY23. That is largely driven by the increase in general fund debt service related to the pending issuance of the NIB and the funding for the public safety campus. So, that is why there's such a big year-over-year increase in the general fund. And most of the others, you see either flat or decreasing expenses as that is paid off, our annual allocation gets smaller. You can see our total citywide debt, which is projected to end at about 117 million. In the current year, will be down to about 107 million next year. This reflects as, as we are paying off the outstanding debt. These numbers do reflect the 2022 IPRB that will be issued June 8th. So, you all are taking final action on that item tonight, but that is already included in these numbers.
And, and Matt, can you even go one, one year out farther off the cuff? I mean, I, I see the debt paying down in the 12-month cycle of about FY24.
Not off the cuff, I can tell you, absent another action by council to authorize additional debt, it will continue to decline at the pace of eight to 10 million dollars a year.
By comparable increments.
Matt, could you add similarly at the front end of it, not off the cuff, but maybe at second reading, a column of what the FY21 ending balance was for our debt? So, in other words, an FY21 ending balance for debt, we show 22 expected debt, FY23 expected debt, and maybe by then, we could get FY24 presuming other projects that we have in the queue.
I think we have.
I think it's important to look at our debt over time.
That is an element of the budget documents under development that Christina and her team are working on, so we, we do have those, we'll share those with council.
Yeah, but I would like to see where we've been on FY21.
But you're saying that, that naturally, the NIB consideration is a driver of this?
Yes, that's, that's the largest, the, the NIB and, and the public safety campus.
Yeah.
As I say, the, the neighborhood improvement, and that, and that number again is $34 million?
Around 36.
36, I see, okay, I keep running down, 36.
It's a fantastic investment.
In terms of our expenditures across the budget by category, personnel make up about 40%. This includes salaries and benefits. Operating includes materials and services that are procured by the city. Capital and CIP includes our rolling stock, physical assets, and capital improvement program. Debt service you see at about 6% of our budget is a, is a, you know, in terms of benchmarking, that is a, an acceptably low figure. So, when we look at our peers, 10% is considered when you start flashing the warning light, so we're at 6% of expenditures. And then inter-fund transfers, which are just money moving between funds, makes up about 5%. So, moving to the general fund, so the current proposed general fund is an expenditure budget of about 124 million. This relies on a use of about $8.8 million in fund balance. And so, as I fast forward to the next slides, you can see what that looks like this year and next year. So, this slide has been amended since the prior work session. As we get closer to year-end, I get more data, I get more comfortable with our year-end projections. Our current projection is that the general fund will outperform budget by about 11.7 million. Around seven and a half million of that is due to revenues coming in over budget, and expenses are projected to come in about 4 million under budget. And that revenue of 7.7 is before we apply the ARPA funds. So, the total improvement will actually be higher than that. But when I take, when I take the ARPA funds and debt proceeds out, budget to projection, we're looking at about 7.7 million higher. So, that leaves us with a projected assigned fund balance at the end of the year after our required reserve of around 24.4 million. Forward to the, the next slide, if you sort of trace down.
I just, I just want to note that, that, as we did last time, that should give us bulletproof in terms of if the economy of this country goes into recession next year. I mean, we've got this one, we learned a lesson in 2008, we've always operated kind of worst-case scenario in terms of additional funds beyond the 20% requirement. And I think you've hit it wonderfully on, in this case. That, of course, is also a big part of why our bond rating is so high, and why we still are the only city in South Carolina with AAA bond rating for all three agencies.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Nobody else comes close to that.
So, if, as we look towards the current year and the implementation of the new council fund balance policy you all adopted last month, so, our projected fund balance at the end of the year of around 48.6 million. We have a 20% required reserve, this is based on next year's planned expenditures of around 24.2 million. We're going to use around $8.8 million of fund balance to fund next year's budget. So, that leaves us a preliminary balance of around 15.6 million. To that, we apply your new capital project reserve policy, so we take 80%, and we set it aside for future years' use. We have a million dollars available to fund the council district dividend for small capital projects, and that relieves us with another 2.1 million in unassigned fund balance. So, our total unassigned fund balance will be 21.6%. So, Mayor, to your point, about a percent and a half above our required reserve, and with the money being in the capital project reserve, we have adequate reserves for any unexpected downturns. So, moving forward to the operating assumptions, I'm only going to hit the highlights here. The, the items highlighted in blue are changes from last reading. So, we've got the additional court service associate that we've discussed. In communications, this is not a number change, but a strategy change. So, we had planned a contract digital media specialist to manage the From Here campaign as part of Beth's team. As we've continued to work on what that really looks like, this may in fact be an employee. The funding is already included in the, the capital improvement projects for economic development marketing. This is just authorizing additional headcount if needed for that position. And then finally, under police, where the current contract for homelessness support resides, we've increased that funding as discussed on the earlier slide. So, those are the, the changes to our operating assumptions. And then in the CIP, I've highlighted the items that we've discussed. Funding for Academy Downtown Bypass, Augusta Street, Greenland Spartanburg area improvements, Wade Hampton Boulevard, and Stone Avenue improvements. Yes, ma'am.
Question on this, how do you know I'm going to ask something, because I opened my mouth?
You're ready to use this, I saw.
I went, okay. On this slide, and forgive me. One line, the third line down says Economic Development Fund, 1.5 million, and then Economic Development Initiatives, 850. What's the difference?
The 1.5 million is the, the fund that, that was formerly funded from the legacy TIF revenues that is available for public-private partnerships. The ED initiatives include things like our support for innovation and entrepreneurship through Next and other partners, our economic development marketing, and then a small fund that we use to fund things like our job development grant and other GLDC-related items.
So, going from memory, I think we gave $250,000 to Next as part of the agreement, we're holding at that? Okay, so we expect 250 to Next in this upcoming year?
Yes.
Okay. I will highlight on your first line, affordable housing, one of the top three goals of this council in this city, we have $2 million. This is, you know, we are still advancing money from the county square agreement for a total of 4 million shown in this year's budget.
That is correct.
Okay. Can I ask about the line item comp plan slash land acquisition, $500,000? So, this speaks towards our ability for, again, one of the three goals of Greenville 2040, open space in the environment. $500,000 does not buy you much land in Greenville these days. I understand we did not spend any of it last year, so we have that, this will put it to a million. But, you know, where are we in, in open space in the environment and, and, and getting land to meet this goal? Do we have a strategy? Do we have a strategy?
I've seen the strategy happen in conversation concerning this. They are working on it. Should have us something June, July timeframe, and it's something that we have to work on. So put together, present our strategy on it, share it with consultants. They are trying to figure out how to present that back to us. It was one of their options under the comp plan, to present us that strategy.
Staff love will have.
Yeah, I mean, because 500,000 a year is not meaningful. I, I would contend that this line item is not a meaningful amount for one of our top three goals in GBL 2040. It wasn't last year, it isn't this year. You know, I don't know how to say it any better. The tools in our toolkit are, are, are Greenville Development Code, which we are working very hard, we staff and CCB are working incredibly hard to get that right. But if we think 500,000 a year is going to make a dent in our ability to purchase land, to preserve it as open space for the community, that is not, that is not a budget that's reflecting that priority. And I will leave it at that.
I, I do think this, of course, is not enough, but we are trying to get a little compounding interest here every year. And as part of our other strategies, we also look toward land donations and other ways to acquire green space in the city, such as annexation, for example.
Well, I just think we're spending a lot more money in things that are not part of our priorities, and I'll leave it at that. That's all I had on this slide. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry, Matt, back to, I had asked about this. Main Street tree, $75,000. Why is that not in tourism funds?
So that has been a legacy TIF-funded project since its inception. We have reflected in the budget a transfer to the general fund of 75,000 to reimburse from the hospitality tax fund to reimburse for this item.
So technically, it is coming from tourism funds?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So this, this next slide is a representation of the full five-year CIP. Council is only considering the first year for funding tonight, so the FY23 budget of around 13.4 million. The years from '24 to '27 are intended to give you all a sense of the planning horizon over the next few years and allow us to make financial decisions for the long term. So no, nothing beyond FY23 is set in stone. These will be where we start the conversation next year, when we, when we start your retreat in January. And as I addressed in one of the earlier slides, the two items, Green Line Spartanburg Area Improvements and Wade Hampton, I'm not at a level of comfort in a number to put out there for next year. We've got money in to do the plans this year. That will inform us on what's needed in the out-years. The other projects had enough specificity for us to feel comfortable putting some numbers in the future years.
And these are, I just want to make it know, especially talking about the, the tree fund, seed money, and other things like that, they're smaller numbers now. Many of these projects started at smaller numbers, and now look at them because we got experience with it and we knew what we're trying to do. And so downtown facade program, commercial corridor program, commercial corridor, we're in particular, we're $2 million now, it used to be $50,000, and now it's citywide in 200, excuse me, $2 million. And the, of course, neighborhood improvements and all that, the sidewalks and the rest.
You know, on that facade, that downtown facade improvement program in that slide 15, sorry, I missed it. So we have 250,000 allocated for that. How much is allocated for other areas, facade improvement?
Two million.
So yes, the, the, the remaining corridor facade improvement is funded as part of the commercial corridors. In prior years, prior to FY22, they would, they would get, I think, 100,000 out of the 500,000, which was our previous level of funding. So currently, I'm, I don't know what amount of the 2 million will go to facade improvements, but there are, you know, substantial resources for.
It's mostly that, it's mostly facade improvements.
It, it's over 300,000. So, you know, we put 500,000 in the current year as a starter, and then through planning and development, as, as activity has generated fines and things like that, they, they've started generating their own resources. So the idea was to get the fund started, let it start generating their own resources. We're, we're continuing to fund a portion of it from the general fund, just to make sure there's momentum, but the.
John, that would be in the, in the next 100 days, I think that would be a very important update through a work session to give council. It's been about a year since we passed the tree ordinance and so, the big picture, how we're doing.
Well, and Shannon, when are we, when are we scheduled to review that ordinance?
January 2020. I did have a constituent reach out to me from Augusta Road seeking facade improvement money in the last month, and they were told that there was no more left. Was that accurate?
Can't speak to that. I don't believe that's accurate, but we'll follow up if you want to pass along their information.
Okay, thanks.
So moving from the general fund to the tourism funds, again, I'm only going to hit high level where there have been significant changes. In the hospitality tax, the significant changes in the CIP, the funding that was previously in the proposed budget for the Park Honor Tower has been removed and has been replaced with the Lawrence-Swan Private Trail connections that we discussed on an earlier slide. In the local accommodations tax, similar to the hospitality tax, the funding for the tower has been removed from this presentation, and we have added a partial floor field capital maintenance. So that will be funded from two sources, the first being the local A tax, the second being the Sunday alcohol tax.
And then Matt, this does not include the discretionary funding for visit Greenville SC, correct?
No, sir. So in the hospitality tax, we have set aside an amount of money for an unassigned tourism marketing promotion, subject to staff making a recommendation on council on how to spend In the state accommodation tax, no change to previous presentations, and you all have, have already reviewed and seen the, the list of proposed funding for that. Sunday alcohol permits, alcohol permits, we have not discussed in any of the previous work sessions. The only expense is their share of the floor field capital maintenance. You can see we have over 100% fund balance in this fund, and over the next few years, they should be able to maintain their share of the floor field capital maintenance.
Love that little fun.
So all in all, we have around a 5.8 million dollar CIP for the current year funded from tourism funds. These are the, the projects and the funding allocations. And then looking out to the horizon, it's a pretty stable CIP in terms of funding. The only item of, of note for FY24 is Cleveland Park Improvement. So this was previously associated with the NIB. There was a request to take it out of the NIB and put it in hospitality tax. They were not going to get to that project for at least another year, and so we recommended funding that in FY24, subject to review next year.
So $2 million?
Yes.
And, and let me jump back to that. Who's, who's representing Parks and Rec today?
Sure.
Hey, Tara. So remind me, if you would please, that $2 million, is that, is that helping to fund previously discussed court redesign and replacement?
This, this 2 million is for the playground and parking. The court project is funded.
The, the greenways and trails, the million dollars that we just saw, that's Kaylin's presentation from 60 days ago.
So moving from the tourism funds to our enterprise funds, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. The only substantive changes made to these from the previous presentation were in the operations and maintenance on each slide. Those numbers have been adjusted as we finalize our risk management and fleet budgets, and so no changes of note for these funds. So the enterprise fund CIP is 10.6 million, led by a hefty investment in sewer rehab from the wastewater fund. And then looking into the out-years, we have a similar level of effort over the next few years in terms of funding from stormwater and wastewater. The zoo will probably have capacity for another round of projects next year like they have this year. And so we'll, we'll get through this project list, we'll see how their fundraising efforts are going on some of their larger capital projects, and this time next year, we'll probably have another recommended list of CIP for the zoo. Last group of funds we did not address in either of the previous work sessions are our community development funds. So CDBG, Home and Hopewell represent about another 1.8 million dollars of investment in affordable housing. We've just, late last week, received next year's allocation numbers. And so Rebecca and her team will go through a public review and input process through the Community Development Advisory Committee, and we'll come back to you all in the future for adoption of a final budget. So your, your budget you adopt, you'll vote on tonight will be a placeholder. It will be amended once the, the community development team gets their final recommendations. So the number, the funds we did not discuss, internal service funds, special revenue funds, these either had no change from the prior year, or there were not substantial increases or decreases. And then in the enterprise funds, the Greenville Convention Center, we're adopting a continuation budget for that facility as we go through negotiations for management services. So there's an R, a pending RFP that we'll make a recommendation to council in the coming weeks on how to handle that, and that will require a re-adopted budget once that is finalized. Again, the major assumptions, we've, we've touched on these in the prior conversations. So today is final work session, the, the first reading of the ordinance and a public hearing, and we're proposing to adopt it on June 13th. Any additional questions?
Got a question back on page 36. Oh, that doesn't look like my 36.
Which one is your 36?
Enterprise Fund CIP FY22 through 26, sorry. There we go, I think that's it. Yes. Okay, first line, affordable housing, County Square. So last year, what we did as a council is support pre-deploying the County Square agreement. We have 7 million in total, 2 million from the initial offer, and the five from the parking offset. The agreement was to pre-deploy the five for Haney, Serene, and surrounding areas. We might have already deployed it, I'm not sure, but at that time, the projection was to have 2 million in this year's proposed budget, which you show, and then 1 million in '23, '24, and 1 million in '24, '25. Why are those now zero?
So the city's share of that 7 million was 5 million. And so we've shown where the 5 million is coming from. You, you appropriated 3 million in the current year's budget, and you'll do 2 million in the next year's budget. The future allocations of, of the other 2 million are intended to come from Greenville County.
Okay, so what you did was you fast-forwarded, so you're fast-forwarding the County Square 5 million, the parking, and that too, that they had put through a letter of intent, would be not shown in here because it's their 2 million?
Yes, ma'am.
So again, that 2 million was, to my recollection, and y'all have all the records to check, it was contingent on when they pulled the first permit on that property. Have they done that yet?
Shannon?
Has county pulled the first permit on property in County Square beyond their stuff? Just their parking garage? So, and there is a five-year expiration on it, so shouldn't we have that 2 million? According to their letter, we should have it.
We'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. Because we're getting close to five years, so I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that 2 million. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the proposed FY23 budget?
As much of the budget, I just keep thinking about the discussion we had about the fund balance and, and the 20% of the unassigned and everything else. I know you do a tremendous amount of benchmarking, Matt. Do you know of any other municipality that we regularly benchmark ourselves against that could even match that level of underlying strength from a reserve standpoint?
So the, the level of fund balance recommended is highly dependent on, on individual jurisdictions' economic conditions. So if we were a beachfront community or one prone to flooding, I would suggest that we want higher than 20%. For a community that does not have that underlying risk, 20% is higher than recommended. GFOA recommendation is 16%, which is about two months of operations. So at 20%, we're almost at three months of operations, or, you know, we're better than, than the, the minimum requirement by a substantial margin.
What, what would be the rough, thinking about that pie chart, and there's a spread between the 6% of our debt service and the 10%, where you said the warning signs would go off. From a dollar standpoint, what would that 4% spread equate to, six to 10?
Around, around 80 million.
And that would be our, the total debt capacity that if we had to or chose to tap into?
In order to, in order to increase our annual debt service spending to that level.
Just to that warning level?
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor and council, you have three items to discuss in executive session this afternoon. One falls under SC 30-4-70A, subsection 5, to discuss economic development incentives for a project on West Washington. Another under subsection A2 for negotiations for proposed contractual matters related to the Liberty Parking Garage. And the last matter is boards and commissions, which falls under subsection A1.
Get a motion, please. Motion.
Is that good?
All in favor, say aye. Both ayes have it. Okay.